Lady did you refuse?
Nope, you're guys, we're a mess.
There's a timeline.
I know this can't.
This is not.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Yeah, it's just embarrassing. She's playing broke parts tonight. Just switch badges.
I mean, you can look at the. You can look at all the.
Oh, nice haircut. Didn't she just get a haircut?
It does look good.
Eleven, yeah? Yeah, I'll post it. Eleven thirty. Good for you.
Oh, who'd you get your haircut?
Well, babe. We'll get the.
I might need to go that direction because I'm losing my hair.
Oh, wait, you got like, you got the Lane Thompsons?
Pretty soon they will all have it.
Look, stay with what you got.
Institutionalized. They will comply.
It looks good, though.
I went to Bob too, and he would smoke while he was cutting my hair.
A cigarette hanging out of his mouth?
But you never, you never had mice?
No. True story.
Smoking mouth.
Yeah.
So, I can, my dad used to go there, too.
Yeah.
See, first. A true professional.
It was a manly place. That's right.
Yeah.
Solve the heartburn.
My dad's definitely so manly.
No, you'll probably leave.
So, Ron O'Neal, what do you think of Halloween?
I'm still working on that. You know, so I didn't jump right in.
I think I'm going to be proud of that.
Time being seven o'clock, the Borough Council meeting and Committee Session will come to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the live of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Borough Call.
President Miller?
Here.
Like President Anthony?
Here.
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 Councilman O'Neal?
Here.
Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Solicitor Cravitt?
Here.
Chief Knut?
Here.
Public Works Director Layer?
Yes.
Superintendent Huey?
Yes.
EPC Arnold?
Here.
Ron and your Compton?
Here, ma'am.
We have a court.
We'll move on to a presentation and ask that Deech Mack and Lawyer Rutter come to the well of Congress. So, the couple of the last three, now, those reasons and on that, I'll do so. I'll not bring today, but there's things to honor you and that's the. The twenty second. Third year.
For such a young.
So, he's one that. Whereas the citizenry and the officials of the borough and the town and the town and the village. Desire their wish to express the recognition and congratulations to Deech Mack and Lawyer Rutter. On their relegation of recreation board and for us. They serve as those terrible and twice there. They countless hours of plan organized and volunteered events, which is in the heart of the school. Whereas they were integral to the efforts of the state, even for their community. What light saving and program was it called? So, a lot of people who deeply recognize the diligence and dedication of the citizens as well and in the citizens. Their faithful presence for over one thousand years, for the magic and thirty years of the others. Because they have high moral standards, outstanding role in the world. Now, there, now therefore, there is all of our classes and the citizens of the borough and the town and the. Are the values of them with respect to the health and health and for members. That's all right.
Thank you so much.
Much, Mr. President.
Thanks, Lord.
Did you have anything you'd like to say? Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you.
Well said.
Moving on, I think we have citizens comment next. Anyone here for citizens comment? Mr. Baker?
Oh, sorry. Very dangerous. I got a thing delivered in the House that was part of the campaign for, uh, for the person everything. It kind of got my attention. And it, because it says that one of the things that the court is accomplishment. And council was first point to answer plan in twenty-five years, getting the traffic studies and paving projects. Being the person that was part of the two thousand seven comprehensive plan development got my attention. And I was curious because the traffic studies in the world right now, I was under the impression that there really isn't anything to do. Go after legacy parks to build that. And the excitement I had with me, other than that, was not much else to do. The other one that I was curious about was the paving projects because I assumed that was built on. Some of the work larger than he was here, the productivity of a plan for paving the streets. That, at that time, I think it came up to the rough estimate of about seventy million dollars to be taken to go. Which I will agree with, and no question about that. But as far as the paving goes, I don't know, is there, I was curious if there is a line in the budget to help support some of this with items in the. And the other one is, I know Gray's been working on a priority list of the streets, working on that, which is a step forward. But so far, the action plan consists of patching potholes.
That's actually not accurate, accurate. We, we went through a, and continue through a phase of implementing the first part of that action plan that Engineer Rodolfski developed. And some streets have been paved this year. There have been some repair to other streets. That have not, not, not included pothole repairs. They've been pretty expensive.
With, with, I would like to make a request that this plan be made available to the planning commission that is running on it. For possible input and make sure that we've covered elements of that as we go forward to developing a comprehensive plan. Which hopefully will start soon.
Yep.
Which I'm gonna have to do again.
And we appreciate that.
We appreciate that, we look forward to your input.
That's it, because that's a tough one. So, if you get a copy of that plan, it'd be most helpful to use as input.
Yes. We'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Thank you.
And I do believe some of our paving projects are online. We've been posting those.
Yes, ma'am, the map for the, where the paving is happening this year is, is online, but we will provide it to the planning commission. No, you're, you're, the road in front of your house is just fine right now. Compared to, compared to some of the other roads, you're, you're. That's correct. That's correct.
I've actually talked to some of the neighbors, we can talk afterwards.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume that would happen in the spring anyway, if you ever hear a time to do it.
Yeah, so not planning before winter, but I've talked to a lot of neighbors on the street. It took, I had an extensive tour of it, but we'll talk after this if you say that.
Thank you very much, we appreciate getting a copy of the plan for the planning commission, so we make sure we don't miss anything.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any other citizens comment? Hearing none, we will move up to approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Hearing none, are there amendments or changes proposed minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony moves, you say a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda's approved. So, we already had citizens comment, and we'll move to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much. September twenty-nine, delivered oath of office to four new fire police. October seven, mugs and music held by the downtown McHanksburg partnership. The eighth, paste of McHanksburg held at the Simpson Library for the Yellow Breaches Rotary Club. Fifteen local restaurants participated. The twelfth, Person of the Year Gala, held by the DMP for John Anthony. Great turnout, good food, thank you, John, for all you do for McHanksburg. Sixteenth, the VFW brought a busload of VA hospital veterans to McHanksburg for dinner. The CAPM members entertained with magic at their tables, very rewarding, very rewarding fun. End of report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda?
Salute.
Vice President Anthony moves, you say a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Booker seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Uh, moving on to the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the regular agenda, discussion and action to approve application and resolution for the twenty-twenty-three local share account grant.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agarjun moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Martin seconds, uh, any discussion?
I, I will say that there's some level of concern on my end relative to us being able to gain, uh, so much money that's on behalf of another organization, I think. Like, I don't know, like, do you feel as though we are quick to take on and manage another sum of money towards these projects?
Yeah, I, I do feel like, um, um, right now, we're managing, uh, probably a million and a half, close to two million, uh, over about ten different grants. Um, I think that will grow, but the capacity that we gained when we hired Luke Arnold kind of, kind of mitigates that, so I think we're good.
Any other discussions or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May I? Question passes. Moving on to the committee, you have an exception, Borough Manager's report.
Uh, yes, sir, it's submitted in your packets and also for the public, I have nothing to add, barring any questions from.
Finance Administration report.
That was quick. Okay, so an update on the IT services, RFP?
Yes, sir, that RFP closes on Friday, the bids are due on Friday. We already have, um, eight submitted bids. And, um, there are approximately forty-five companies registered to bid. I don't, don't expect we'll get half of that many that actually submit a bid, but, um, uh, it was a very good engagement on clarification and questions during that period. Um, probably had twenty-twenty-five clarification requests that came in, all very good, um, correct, uh, good questions to ask from an IT perspective. So, I think we're gonna get some good, some good bids, and, um, I'm looking forward to doing them over the weekend and getting them back for, with a recommendation.
So, the recommendation would come?
Uh, it, I have a feeling that there will be a down select first, um, to a smaller number, and that we may end up doing some in-person, um, discussions with those down-selected companies.
Okay.
Uh, because we do want to make sure that before we go on to the last, to the final selection, that we are apples to apples on cost. Um, and I haven't seen any of the cost proposals yet, but I doubt that they're gonna all come in comparable, comparable apples to apples, so we'll have to do some, some work there.
Will there be enough time to integrate what whoever wins the bid into our current budget process, or will we be?
I think there will be. Um, I, um, I've stressed that throughout the clarification process because as part of any, um, RFP process, they continually ask for extensions, and I've been very clear that we need to build that into the budget program, so.
Any questions?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Manager, the bid system I know was down, or at least one or two bidders were having difficulty submitting their bids, do you know if that has been resolved?
It was resolved, um, the people who had the problem were able to call Penn Bids Company, and then it was resolved within about two days.
Thank you for your assistance in that, that was important. I wondered if that kept our number of bids down a little bit if we only received eight, you're not telling me, sir?
No, I, I sent a mass email to all registered bidders, so all forty and change, um, noting that there was an issue that had been corrected and asking them all to please make sure if they intended to bid, to make sure they go back in and submit.
Efficient as always, thank you. And second, quick thing, in the, in the, in the selection process, I'm assuming, we've talked about this before, but it's important enough to me, I wanted to bring it up again briefly. In that some companies will use proprietary softwares or systems that encode the data so that when you move away from that company, they take your access to your own data away from you. And then force you to spend significant amounts of money in order to access that data again. I would be strongly opposed to go with any company that has such policies. And my understanding is that any reputable firm, uh, in the name of standing, would not, would not employ such technology. Um, is that something that you're sensitive?
A little known secret, I've been a data rights person for some time in a previous career, and so, um, I'm working that very strategically for the next contract. To make sure that it's very clear that our data is our data, and our data is transportable and exportable at our will.
Right, because what I did not know when, when I first encountered this issue was the data, they didn't make any argument about the data being, uh, being the author, let's say, the office property. But it was the software to access the data that they use to hook you. So, thank you for being sensitive, I really do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, uh, discussion on requested ordinance change regarding stray cats.
Uh, so, so my update is we provided some language on a, um, on a, um, potential ordinance change. And, uh, really, the, um, the request from staff is for the committee to consider whether or not they want to take that language as was provided. And send to Solicitor for, uh, consideration and, and integration into the ordinance. Uh, and then, or did they want further research in that area for us to propose something different?
I have a, just some further research to consider for the committee. I know the trap neuter release TNR, um, program that we've adopted is something that has been touted as something effective, and, um, or at least it hopes to be effective. I just think it's a good idea to look at perhaps an opposing view of that, because I did a little research from the University of Florida. That talks about being not as humane as, as we thought. So, as we're considering the ordinance, I would like us just to consider all of that, and I have some reports from the committee to look at and look at.
Someone not as humane, like the trap neuter spay?
So, what they're saying is that when those cats are returned back to the same area, uh, there's other diseases that the, the vaccines don't necessarily take care of, and they're, and they're subject to more inhumane conditions. And, and this was done in Florida, Farty, so I don't know if it was an environmental thing, but we have winter here, so I imagine that would be departure. I'm just saying, as we look at this comprehensively, that we consider that perspective as well. Not advocating for either one, I just want to be, yeah, see the other shot, comprehensive.
Sure.
Yeah.
Currently, what does our ordinance say?
Well, what the, what the ordinance, uh, that's being, uh, proposed does is it's not really about the trap meter return portion of, um, of anything in the borough. What it's more about is the transporting of, of, um, the trapping of animals and transporting them outside the borough. And whether or not that extends, um, as a, uh, with civil penalties. And so, the recommendation from the resident last week was to include language that would make it, um, uh, against the borough ordinance for them to trap a cat and take it outside the borough and release it. Uh, because they, the, the resident was an advocate for the program, and then the concern was they had a neighbor that was trapping the cats and then taking them to a landfill and letting them go. And, uh, and so, the proposal was to try to curb that behavior while also kind of using that to bolster the TNR program within the borough.
Already a push. And I just want to make sure as we move down that road, we're not necessarily doubling down on something that may not be as effective. I'm just using this as an opportunity for us to do a little more research, so.
So, in other municipalities, if you would remove a cat, they're subject to, to civil penalties. So, I guess my, if someone was removing cats and taking them to a shelter, that would not be the same thing as taking them to a dump?
I would, not sure.
But that, that would be my question about the ordinance.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the destination is in, is considered in the language, where you take it. I think it's the trapping and the remove, the trapping and the removal. Uh, but I, I absolutely think that that's something that we can send to Solicitor for assessment.
Mr. Manager, does the current or proposed wording address feeding of feral cats? Well, that would be next to address that part of the.
No, especially in the, especially, uh, in light of the, the TNR program, it actually, part of that is to feed the cats. Uh, because the whole point of it is that you're reducing the cat population by the neutering process, but you're bringing it back and still caring for it, um, by feeding it. That's the program as it is today.
So, that reduction of the cat population clearly is going to take time.
Right.
Presuming the lifespan of the cats.
Yep.
And, and don't forget that we have a mice problem, too, which I know is a separate issue that was brought to our attention, but cats do get rid of mice.
Only hungry cats get rid of mice.
Only hungry cats, okay.
Watcher, oh, that's accurate. In my experience.
In my experience, my cat has caught a mouse and he's been fed, but, um, I don't, I don't know, I think that this is not just a straightforward, um, issue. Because I, I think that we should take into consideration where the cats are being, if someone is taking them to a shelter versus a dump. Um, and I also think we need to address, because I do believe the other chatter that wasn't brought in front of us was feeding cats, because that does bring about some animosity between neighbors.
And as a property owner that has a, seemingly a cat highway on my house, like, I feel like, as the owner of the property, I, if I want to take the cats out, away from my house, I should have that right as a property owner to do that.
And one of the things I noted in, in, was noted in the report, that, that most feral cats are not adoptable. Just not even be adopted, so their recommendation was, I know that's not popular, I get that. But that's the reality of at least this scientific study.
And then I would ask, what, what causes a cat to become feral? Is it just being outside? Because some people do allow their cats to go in and out of their homes, and that's.
Not all cats outside are feral, feral, right, that's, that's true.
So, how would you?
There is an ordinance to address stray cats, though, correct?
Might I suggest that, that the, the staff do a little bit more homework on the comprehensive issue of cats in the borough? And then maybe come back. I'd like to also maybe cross-check some of the language with Solicitor about penalties and, and that sort of thing, and how those things work when you leave the borough, and how enforceable that is. Uh, if you don't, if you don't mind, I just feel like very unable to, to have the dialogue right now from my perspective.
A little more complex than I thought.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's bigger issue than that.
And just for the record, I, I thought we were gonna have some representatives here this evening, uh, I don't see anyone here speak on the issue. Did you receive any correspondence?
That's his last meeting, no.
The last I heard, we were gonna have Captain.
No, we received, uh, they came to the last meeting, and then they provided the draft language via email, and that was the last meeting.
Okay.
Can we, do you okay with pausing?
Oh, God. Was that intentional?
Pause.
Wow, no.
Pause, I didn't get it at first.
Wish it worked. I'll take that as a yes, thank you very much.
You're writing these down?
That is all we have.
Public Works and Safety.
All right, Public Works and Safety, um, so, uh, San Security Sewer Department reports, uh, Superintendent Huey, is there anything you'd like to highlight from your report? Uh, Public Works Department, uh, Public Works Director Layer?
Nothing.
Anything you'd like to highlight?
Nothing.
Engineer Rodolfski? Um, Public Safety Department reports, um. Do you have anything you'd like to highlight from your report?
Nothing to highlight at this time, I do, did prepare a safety message that Manager Thompson has for distribution in the topic of campfires, recreational fires. That'll be out shortly, regarding.
Right, thank you. We have ordinance to speak to that, right? You have to be cooking food, yes?
Yeah, I have it locked.
Um, and then, yeah, that's, we don't have any items of discussion, so, um, that is the end of Public Works and Safety.
Thank you, I will highlight, uh, a portion of, if you don't mind, from the, the manager's report. The road repair program began in late August and is now approximately eighty percent complete. The Borough Engineer and Manager are in discussions with the Borough's Financing Consultants to generate loan and bond options for the Finance Committee to review in support of, um, the continuation of the program in twenty-twenty-four. So, that is where I can stand, now we will be evaluating the budget shortly to support the additional loan and bond financing.
Speaking of that, but if you happen to know what the total expenditure on that project was this year?
This year, it was one point one million dollars.
That's substantial.
Moving on to municipal and community outreach, Councilman O'Neal?
Yes, prior to this meeting, I had the pleasure of receiving a tour of the Simpson Public Library Learning and Book Sale Center. Uh, the mayor was in attendance as well, I did the tour from Karen Cochran, the Capitol Campaign Director, to Erdman. And, um, it was very eye-opening to see the work and the plans that are, that's happening across the street. Uh, their, their idea there is to create a, to extend what they already have at the library, a center for learning and leisure. And, uh, so they're in the middle of their Capitol Campaign, uh, it's a two million dollar campaign. Uh, they gave me the tour as is, so that was, I loved the way they did it in order, because I'm not a guy that can envision something until I see renderings. Afterwards, then they showed me some pictures. I'm not a guy that can envision something until I see renderings afterwards. Then they showed me some pictures, which I didn't, I, I, I'm not, I don't have all the pictures. I do have just a general layout, but all that to say, uh, I, I was very impressed, very encouraged. The idea though, uh, in essence is to create more space, obviously. The library is well attended on a daily basis. They have lots of groups meeting there, uh, lots of reading programs and manjong and uh, knitting kind of things and everything in between. And this will now extend that space. This will mostly be an adult population here, reserving the library mostly for the kids. So uh, it's just, it's a project that's well worth paying attention to in our community. Um, the outside of that building, when it's finished, if it looks anything like the architectural renderings, it's going to be amazing. It's going to raise things on this block to a new level. So ve- very, very impressed. School board liaison report, Mr. Anthony.
Uh, yeah, sure. So um, the school board met earlier this month. They approved their um, fall rec program. They approved their but their schedule for budget considerations for twenty four, twenty five. They increased their contribution to the library by five dollars a student. Uh, they approved um, some high school uh, change orders. They bought or approved the purchase of hydroponics lab for the high school. It sounds pretty cool. And then there was a uh, a discussion about the elections. Mister Ryan, who was on the school board, was approved to be an employee of the district and so is going to be rendering his resignation. And so they'll be appointing somebody to region one seat uh, sometime at the end of November, early December. So if uh, there's anybody from region one that would be interested in being on the school board, they would submit their uh, application slash uh, resume to the district. That's all.
I think region one's upper alley.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Everyone, the community economic development council.
Thank you. Glory, you forward, Councilman Dan.
No vote.
Thank you. Road downtown from the source stature, Liz Gere, if you'd like to.
My key issues in my uh, council update in the form of an agenda that provided two couple of things on that. The Rover flats project, which is the um, building at the corner of West Strawberry and North Railroad. This is where Derry all, all these things. Well, and and some will help to in the project. We have had a number of meetings with two respective companies, um, the one at the corner with Strawberry um, alley is a brewery and that's one. We've had a number of meetings with them. They're talking about financing that getting free, free development authority, county funds as well as the borough application. And we have met with and continue to discuss a product development tourism grant through the company down in the city. That would provide up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for equipment and have a two percent match. So we'll work to keep that all together before bringing the employee another. That's an existing brewery and restaurant that will be relocated and significantly. The other end, which is a vacant unit close to the gingerbread. Looks to be a cigar lounge. He'll do that at the brewery, right? So they're nice companion projects. We have met too. Those are also plenty of possibilities. And the two are immediately devoted to zero about that. We will fill it up as project A and project B. They work together on this block that would be the real transfer. Revelation Spa will bake it, their unit in the middle. Brewery will be taking a part of that space. So they um, will be baking that unit. Eaters has new ownership and new house. They're now open Monday and Tuesday, so we don't have to get hungry. And if it's scheduled to hours, uh, you can see that they're in the report. Richard Hannah is the owner. The relocated name is under leadership, ownership. At the last company, Major Thompson, talking about that, and the old jail that is located there surrounded by fencing and the people that will do the, what is it in there? And so I started doing some thinking and reflecting with you folks. We do have an entity that is interested in it. I saw the, the legal notice today about the bid opening on November first. I know that you might, are looking to make something happen fairly quickly. We continue to do research. Um, we're getting some photos of the interior. Lovely is the exterior. And uh, looking at financing to be able to uh, do the engineering study to see if it can be moved. And then the possibility of relocating. We're looking for the redevelopment authorities demolition project to see if those are eligible uses of those.
I have a question about this old jail. What, what is the history? Okay, so it's just kind of a mystery, history?
No, we know this is.
There's some, there was something online I saw. It was like from, it was like the town lockup from eighteen hundreds. I don't know. It's been moved. It, it wasn't there in the beginning. It was elsewhere in the borough.
My understanding, in the decade when I went along, I can't tell from the, the um, photo that was taken, it said nineteen thirteen to nineteen fifteen.
I think it's nineteen fifteen.
Nineteen fifteen and it was, it might run off, you know, better. It was originally positioned behind the western fire. But it was moved about then.
Why are you looking at the mayor? Was he mayor then?
He was jail keeper then.
Civil warrior. It was made nineteen fifteen. Inside there's a.
So the inside, there's a date that says nineteen fifteen?
Yes.
I know.
It's a tourist destination now.
Anyway, we're looking at it. We're, we're working on it. I don't have any enough this night, but we're looking at, working on it and we would, that entity would help that it could be relocated.
When, when was it relocated down to the lagoon? Okay, so.
I do have an interesting um, an interesting photo that was brought to me the other day out of a cookbook. That, that has a, a drawing of the lockup. And the little narrative that it says next to it in this cookbook from the nineteen fifties is the lockup was a temporary jail built in eighteen fifty eight. It was a stone structure. Um, it says, most often farmers were locked up in the jail following a Saturday night on the town and were released Sunday morning. Their names were never given out because they were all referred to as Johnny drunk. At present, the, it says at present, the outside walls are covered with cement. And it actually has a little hand sketch drawing of the, I, I can.
I'd be inter- interested in the recidivism, right, of calling him Johnny drunk.
I really just, for the project purposes, we need some resolution to it. So it would be nice to not have to put the project on hold for very long.
Sarah, our town is not called Farmersville. There's mechanics work, so. High recidivism.
Okay, Johnny drunk.
First follow up is, in your full report, you said Seventeenth Maine Sangre property, it was a potential buyer. Is there any movement on that or any?
That buyer remains very interested. The owner of the, although he reached out to a couple of folks to see if they would be looking to do it. And they had said, no.
Is it a price issue? Okay, maybe we could talk after the meeting and discuss that further. And then the other, the other small tidbit was, I've been hearing from a few, just a few citizens, but I kind of believe in the iceberg principle. When you hear a few things, it's a lot more under the surface. So what I'd say is that um, our messaging about projects being funded by grant dollars and being restricted to the projects to which they're being applied is a very positive message. And that's being well received. I think there's a potential small hole in that messaging, which is that one person observed, and it was, it was really a minority, right? One person observed that, well, why would you pick that project to find funding for? And I think sometimes that's the reverse, right? We find funding and we find a project that fits the funding. But it doesn't matter how it goes. I just think the message has been really good. And I would just encourage um, the office to just keep up the good work because uh, people don't always understand why we're putting a walking path in somewhere when there's paving to be done. If we can't use those dollars for anything but that walking path, that really does explain a lot. And then they're seeing things improve all over the place, not just in one area. And, and I know this council's been very in tune with trying to find free money to do projects. And you guys are doing a great job and Rebecca always has done a great job. Thank you.
I think most people don't have this good news yet. For any grant program, there's criteria. So often when you see that opportunity, any particular, particular project where that would
Well, thank you for following me so much. Okay, you could just listen to her all night. All right. So Planning Commission Liaison Report. Mister Manager, would you like to say anything with regard to Planning Commission?
Uh, I think we have now a full uh, slate of, of members at this point. And so uh, looking forward to getting into the comprehensive planning in the winter. And I think there's just one, one item that we'll be bringing for, so far for the rest of this year. Um, this calendar year, just one more item.
So if you could just clarify for the rest, my brethren on council. So there hasn't been a lot of activity in the Planning Commission? And that's been for a couple of reasons, I think. Could you enumerate those for us?
Uh, well, early in the year, we had trouble getting a quorum for a few meetings. That was the January, February, March, kind of at the end of the Legacy Park Day four discussions. Uh, then um, over the summertime, we just didn't have um, applicable issues to, to run through the Planning Commission. Um, and now I think we're at the point where um, we have a couple of items that we'll be bringing through. But really the, the big pivot point right now is from, from routine hearing of, of new applications to a massive comprehensive planning effort next year. And so I think that the operational tempo of that group will be ten or fifteen times what it is right now over the next year.
So it's good to hear that the, the organization is getting ready to be able to take on some projects. The comprehensive plan has been on schedule, is that correct?
It is. The uh, the bid period ends on tomorrow. Uh, and I'll be reviewing the first set of um, of proposals that come in along with uh, Mister Stoner from the county. Uh, he's kind of our mentor through the process. And uh, and then what we'll be looking to do is whether or not we need to down select first or whether we can go straight to a, a selection uh, recommendation. And we'll run that through Planning Commission and then through council for a clear.
Right. And so the plan is, is due in, in our hands approximately when the timeline is.
The completed plan would probably be the end of next summer. Um, and yeah, starting in February, the end of next summer would be the goal.
So as the liaison to the Planning Commission, there's been nothing that the borough can turn over with regard to the comprehensive plan. It doesn't exist at the moment.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, and I'm sure that uh, the, this council really wants that planning commission to be engaged and, and on full drive. So we're looking forward uh, in the planning commission to having that information when it's available. And we're glad to hear that it's on schedule and that everything's going well.
And that will be, just for clarification, that will be paid for by county grant fund?
It's, it's matching. Um, yeah, it's twenty thousand grant from the county and twenty thousand in the budget.
Great. Thank you. Our liaison, Councilman Anthony.
Yeah, um, as you saw, we had a hard meeting. We put on the agenda and approved for a porch replacement. Um, I will say that this was the first applicant that came before us for recommendations before starting the project and then came back and presented a complete application, which was very helpful. And I think um, we're on a good pace to continue providing education in the community for projects that are coming up.
Thank you so much. Partnership Liaison Report, Councilman.
Um, they're getting ready to have a board retreat November fourth, so it's very exciting. They have lots of things going on. Um, we had a successful Mugsy Music on last weekend. Thank you so much to the borough manager for helping construct the stage and um, supporting that. Um, we did have lots of bands and we had some breweries down there. I think overall, it was a really good turnout for the first event. And we look forward to doing another one. And I'm not contagious, I apologize. So like, um, that is what we're working on now and we'll be looking forward to new initiatives for the next year. Oh, yeah. And then we have the person of the year, but we've already talked about it. How much more do we have to talk about? And John, of course, was presented with person of the year, well deserved. And it was a beautiful event. And for those who attended, um, John chose to feature nonprofits in the community. So there was over twenty? Twenty um, nonprofits that came there and presented their organizations and how we can reach out and support them. It was a really cool take on the person of the year, although um, it didn't feature John getting roasted like we'd all want to do. But um, it really shows his character as to all of the places that we can be supporting. And I think that was a, a great opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. In addition to raising money for downtown, record, although.
Record money? Would you like to give your number?
No.
No?
Number one.
I just saw anybody from Mr. Lupia, uh, he has the number for the.
The final tally?
Uh huh, yeah, sure.
So just, just so everyone knows, John's not competitive, but he won.
I won, I won.
Thank you. Property Parks and Recreation, Councilman Martin.
Uh, I don't have anything from the rec board as their um, meetings have been canceled lately. And uh, Council, Councilman Booker, do you have shade tree or?
Um, I was not in attendance at either uh, shade tree and E A C, Environmental Programs Coordinator, Arnold. Is there anything you'd like to highlight from either of those meetings?
Um, from the E A C meeting, we talked a little bit about the urban forestry grant, um, next steps for that. Um, I did just get an email last week notifying us of our pass through partner, which is uh, American Forests. They're a national organization that oversees um, like microforestry. Um, they're super cool. And we should be getting a financial agreement to begin by March twenty twenty four. Um, so super exciting things to come. For shade tree, um, our bare root tree planting for the fall is going to be happening the first week in November. Um, we're getting the trees delivered on November sixth, and that's for thinking binder and memorial park.
I can talk about pumpkin?
Oh, uh, I did harvest six pumpkins from the garden, uh, to grow the flow garden. So that was very exciting.
Why don't you also um, pass along your information about the urban forestry grant? That's good news that you received this week.
Right. Um, part of the original grant application um, was that the five hundred thousand dollar funding that we were receiving would have to be matched five hundred thousand dollars on our end of the borough. Um, originally that plan was to provide that match fully through in kind volunteer services. Um, so we're budgeting, I think, with about four thousand hours a year in volunteer support. Um, I did receive notice that because we are under the pass through award of American Forests, um, we do not have to match the grant funding. Um, and that is getting waived.
Wow.
That's awesome.
So it's basically free money now, so we're.
Huge deal. Like you should stand up and speak about.
Person of the year.
I thought the pumpkins were good, but yeah.
For the record, I hired him.
And then that, I think, yeah, and then that's all I have then.
All right. And then we have one discussion on the agenda for the River Avenue Park.
Yeah, I, what I wanted to do was um, uh, I have an input from Engineer Rogowski on the um, as a response to a request from council regarding the stormwater status for um, Railroad Avenue Park. Um, so I'm just going to read it, but it'll also be entered into the minutes. Uh, it says, um, the project is currently out to bid with the bid opening scheduled for November first. Um, at the last council meeting, there was discussion about the project's potential impact on stormwater system in that general area. Several days prior to that council meeting, uh, we had conducted a field inspection of the stormwater facilities, including direct access to the diversion vault that was identified at the meeting, the conditions that. Conditions that we found were consistent with the statement that this particular area acts as a stormwater overflow. Based on the results of that field observation, we have incorporated a stormwater facility into the current design. Which will also act as a public education component to address one of our M S four requirements. We intend to achieve both a functional and an aesthetic enhancement to that area. However, no improvement will completely prevent flooding in this particular area. Uh so he wanted to make sure we pass that message along to council and that we add it to the record. And just to be sure that um the engineer is a key component to this project. Um not just from a structural issue and a contract management, but also we're using it as an education. Um uh component for our M S four requirements in the park. So there will also be a a learning that happens there about stormwater management.
Thank you.
That's all we have on the agenda.
Thank you, personnel committee.
Nothing to report at this time.
Any other citizen comments? Now beyond the land development process.
Yeah, it is.
Moving on to other business.
Nothing?
Nothing.
No.
Uh okay, we're adjourned. Uh adjourned to an executive session on a matter of personal.